All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting into order. If I can please begin with roll call. Mayor Prosser Tomayo.
Here.
Councilmember Torres.
Councilmember Torres.
Councilmember Peralta.
President.
Mayor Melendez.
And I am here. I'd just like for the record to state that Councilmember Torres is joining us via phone. And also, I know he's also being impacted by the fires that are going on. So we wish him will be, he'll be in our prayers today and also his family. If we can please have the announcing of the closed session items.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Anyone who wishes to address the city council on the items on the agenda. I should note, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Been used to another person sitting next to my left. That item number three, conference of legal counsel existing litigation will not be discussed tonight. So we will just be dealing with items one and two. And anyone who wishes to address the city council on those two items would have had to fill out a card and turn it into the city clerk's office at this time. Do we have any speaker cards for the two closed session items?
We have no speaker cards.
Thank you very much. Then at this time, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we ask the council recess into closed session for items number one and two as listed on the agenda.
Thank you. We'll adjourn for items one and two. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I think we have a little bit of an echo here. I'd like to reconvene from closed session. If I can please have our city attorney provide a report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The record should reflect that the city council recessed into closed session with all four members being present, council member Torres being present via telephone. Through recess into closed session, there were the two items that were discussed or announced prior to recessing into closed session. Items one and two, the record should reflect as follows. So, the public employee discipline dismissal release matter was heard by the city council. There was no action taken on that item, and there is nothing further to be reported at this time. On item number two, conference legal counsel existing litigation, city council provided the city attorney's office direction on possible resolution of this case, but since there was no final resolution, there is nothing further to report. And as indicated earlier, item number three was not discussed this evening and will be held over to a future date. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It is appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you, city attorney. At this moment, I'll have our city clerk do the invocation, and our fire chief will do the pledge of allegiance. So, if you could all please rise.
As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keep in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world, and let us continue to pray for all of our first responders and everyone that is being affected by all the fires in California. We ask this in thy name, amen.
Let's place our hands over our heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you both. I'd like to move on to the presentation portion of our agenda. So, if I can please have my colleagues join me in the front. We'll be recognizing our citizen of the month.
Good evening, everyone again. We have a whole speech here for you, but we all know you here personally. So, it is my honor to really, for my first citizen of the month, to recognize you. We, Darlene, we know you're here, all of us very personally, and you do so much for this community. So, I'll read a little bit of all the stuff that you do, and I'll invite you up here, but extremely honored that you're the recipient of this. So, again, I am honored to recognize Darlene Sanchez Fiero as our January 2025 citizen of the month. Darlene's journey is a testament to her deep roots in Montebello and her unwavering commitment to the people who call this city home. Born and raised in Montebello, she attended our local schools and 22 years ago founded her business, rejuvenating skincare medical aesthetics. Darlene has consistently given back to the community in remarkable ways. Through her business, she sponsors programs for women, including victims of domestic violence and single parents striving to rebuild their lives. Offering services such as laser treatments, tattoo removals, and skincare, she helps these women regain confidence and re-enter the workforce. As a dedicated parent of Montebello Christian School, she has volunteered her time and expertise to enhance the educational experience for students. She played a pivotal role in establishing the school's new transitional kindergarten program in 2023, led Jogathon, fundraising efforts to support transportation, music, and sports programs, and assisted with renovation projects, including the new playground. Told you it was gonna be long. In May of 2024, Darlene and her business hosted a charity dinner in collaboration with the Word Church LA to provide tuition-assisting grants and scholarships for families in need. Her commitment to creating safe and supportive environments for children is deeply rooted in her experiences as an ER nurse, where she witnessed firsthand the challenges many young people face. As a proud member of the Rotary Club, Darlene collaborates with organizations like the YMCA to provide backpacks and laptops for students, organizes back-to-school shopping sprees, and supports Heart of Compassion in preparing essential food baskets for Thanksgiving. Darlene's vision is to help create a safe, nurturing, and thriving community for our future leaders. Her work has touched numerous lives, and her commitment to service inspires us all to do more for neighbors in our city. Darlene, on behalf of the city of Montebello, thank you for your unwavering dedication and incredible contributions. Your kindness and leadership embody the spirit of our community, and we are so proud to honor you tonight. Please join me in congratulating Darlene Sanchez Fiero, our January 2025 citizen of the month. Darlene, if you want to say a few words?
After that. Well, thank you, Mayor Melendez and council members, the community of Montebello. It's been a great honor to serve and to just help the lives of the children of this community. I continue to do what I do and to serve as the best that I can. And I also want to commend you and thank you for all your efforts in advancing this city and helping it grow. I do want to also extend prayers to the victims of our fires and also our first responders. So, yes, thank you, and God bless us all.
Thank you. And if you want to join, your family wants to come in for a picture as well. And we have some stuff for you over here. And we have some stuff for you over here. I think we have one more, right?
Okay, we'll be moving on. We also do have a couple more proclamations. We have proclamation for Human Rights Month. As we begin the new year, the city of Montebello recognizes National Human Rights Month. While National Human Rights Day is universally observed in December, we would like to take this opportunity to reflect and honor it at the start of the new year. In 1948, with the memory of World War II still fresh, the United Nations crafted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The very first article states, "All humans beings, all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. They are endowed with reason and conscience and should act towards one another in a spirit of brotherhood." The document goes on to define what human rights should be respected and protected universally, as well as emphasizing how important it is to do so. National Human Rights Month highlights the Declaration of Human Rights and the struggles faced by people across the globe. It encourages everyone to stand up for the rights and dignity of all individuals, regardless of race, gender, religion, language, political beliefs, social background, or national origin. Here in Montebello, we proudly celebrate the principles of universally protected human freedoms, including equality, fairness, life, liberty, and freedom from discrimination, slavery, and insecurity. This month and every month, let us honor the belief that all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights. We'd also like to provide a proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Human Trafficking Awareness Month is recognized globally every January to shed light on the pervasive issue of human trafficking, modern-day slavery, and raise awareness of the various forms of exploitation affecting millions of people worldwide. Although the Emancipation Proclamation declared 1.3 million enslaved individuals free in the wake of our country's civil war, the fight against slavery continues. Today, over 27.6 million people, including both adults and children, are victims of human trafficking around the globe, including right here in the United States. This month, we honor the efforts of anti-trafficking organizations, state and local law enforcement, survivor advocates, faith communities, and engaged citizens who work tirelessly to combat human trafficking. Everyone has a role to play in addressing this crisis. This Saturday, January 11th, let's unite in raising awareness by participating in Wear Blue Day. Blue is an international color for human trafficking awareness, and we encourage everyone to wear blue, take photos, and share them on social media using the hashtag #WearBlueDay. You can also join the movement by following at DHDS Blue Campaign for valuable information and resources. Together, we can make a difference, and let's commit to spreading awareness and supporting efforts to end human trafficking. We will move forward to corrections? Public comment? Non-agenda items?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. We now reached the point in tonight's agenda for public comments on non-agenda items. This time, anyone who wishes to address the city council on items that are not on the city council's agenda would be required to have filled out a card and turned them in to the city clerk prior to this moment. Do we have any non-agenda city council comments, public comments?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Anthony Granados, followed by Rosa Tamayo. Is Anthony Granados here? Very well, then we'll move on to Rosa Tamayo, followed by Levon Prothero.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mayor Salvador Melendez.
Mayor Salvador Melendez.
En miembros del Consilio, yo soy Rosa Tamayo.
Council members, I am Rosa Tamayo.
Les quiero decir que...
I'd like to tell you.
Por el Distrito Cinco, la especial elección...
On behalf of District Five regarding the special election...
Las contribuyentes, personas que habitan en el Distrito Cinco...
The taxpayers that reside in District Five...
Tengan su derecho de votar.
Should have a right to vote.
Por la democracia.
For democracy.
Y también ustedes tienen que poner atención...
And you should also pay attention.
Para que no se miren con un problema de especial intereses personales.
So, you don't face a problem with personal interest conflicts?
Nosotros necesitamos a Distrito Cinco porque paga mucho tax para esta ciudad.
We need District Five for this city, because there's a lot of taxes to be paid.
Tiene mucha industria.
There's a lot of industry.
Y pues ellos tienen derecho a su democracia.
And, well, they have the right to democracy as well, to vote.
Es un propio derecho de cada persona.
That's a right that each person should have.
El otro, otra cosa que quiero decirles es que...
Another thing I want to mention.
Se necesita urgentemente mucha vivienda.
We urgently need a lot of housing.
Accesible.
Accessible.
Y aparte de accesible, que sea una vivienda con...
More than accessible, it should be housing with...
Que no sea tan costoso.
That it shouldn't, that it's not too expensive.
Afordable y también low income porque ahorita estamos viendo...
And for low income, what we're seeing now...
Con tantos incendios que hay, no sabemos cuántas personas van a venir a vivir a nuestra ciudad.
What we're seeing now with all these fires, we don't know how many people are going to move to the city.
Estas personas perdieron todo.
They lost everything.
Así que miren donde hay lugares donde se pueda construir lo más rápido posible.
So, please look out for areas where we can build as fast as possible.
Yo creo que ustedes son muy inteligentes como para hacer un proyecto mejor para todas las personas.
Really smart.
De vivienda.
You can get going on this project for so many people that will need housing.
Yo también sé que ustedes han puesto a un lado el ADA. Están en con...
I also know that you have put aside ADA.
No están trabajando en el ADA como deberían de hacerlo.
You have not been working on ADA's.
Conflicto. No sé por qué no se mueven a hacerlo más accesible en nuestra ciudad.
I'm not sure why it can't be made more accessible in the city.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Levon Prothero, followed by Sandra Cabrera Gonzalez.
I believe the last time I came, I said Montebello, fentanyl capital of California. I think it still is. You know, I said if they weren't sabotaging my race car, I probably wouldn't be here. Well, I rented it in October. They sabotaged everything but the engine, including my best friend for the 50 years. Only thing I wonder about is, would the guy at 848 pay my best friend? How much to drive it like that? Drove it like my great-great-grandmother. Anyway, something I keep forgetting. About a year ago, there was three overdoses in downtown LA. Couple weeks later, there was a junior high school that overdosed. The funny part of that is, the next-door neighbor stayed away from the house for three or four days on each incident till some LA police officer called him up and told him it was clear. You know, so you wondered, did they make the drugs? I think so. That's where Montebello gets the name Fentanyl Capital. Now, recently, it looks like they shut down the house at 849. It looks like that, I'm not sure that it's shut down. So, if somebody here did that, that's good, that's first step. But that pissed off the guy across the street, who's the boss. He's the one that delivers the payments in his Volkswagen to Montebello somewhere up here. I wasn't gonna follow him, but I knew it wouldn't... They didn't know two minutes after I left if I was following him because of the eye doctor in Whittier that, when I did my cat, or actually put cameras somewhere. So, everything I see, they see. That's how bad it is. Anyway, before I forget, half of what I want to talk, I could talk for two hours if I don't get brain-dead. You know, I consider these drug dealers dumbasses for just screwing me around. Mainly, they want the house, because I keep wondering if I'm the only house on 800 South Fourth Street block that's not involved in the damn drug business. I think I'm the only house. They want the house. Otherwise, their dumbasses could, you know... But they've also tried to kill me with an electric shock into my heart. That's supposed to give you a heart attack. That didn't work. A while back, it was almost like I had a stroke. Somebody in police department don't want them to go machine gun them like we're in Mexico. So, you know, I had like, almost like a stroke. The top of my head felt like it was gonna blow off. That's after I did something that pissed them off. Anyway, you know, they probably shut off my hot water tank for the last five years, five, six, 700 times. Now, they're using my hot water to make drugs. So, I shut, I get pissed off. I shut it off once in a while, because they make drugs from 6:00 in the evening roughly to 6:00 in the morning. Okay, three minutes?
Yes, thank you for your comment.
I could talk for three days.
Next speaker is Sandra Cabrera Gonzalez, followed by Delia Delgado. Is Sandra Cabrera Gonzalez here in the audience? No, okay, we're gonna move on to Delia Delgado, followed by Bill Polisso.
Good evening, council members, mayor, staff, and community. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate you, Mayor Melendez, on your position as mayor and for Scarlett, Ms. Peralta, council member Peralta, for your newly-election, and for Mr. Torres, council member Torres, on his election. And I am really looking forward to this council really coming together. First off, no personal gain, that's not what these positions are about. It's about coming together for the community and doing what's right for the community. So, I am really excited about this council, and I'm looking forward to hearing of all the exciting things that are going on in Montebello. I also wanted to bring up the fires right now all over Los Angeles. I happen to know several families that lost their homes in the Pasadena-Alta Dina area, and my prayers go out to them and that we all be mindful of what we have and just remember that we don't live in glass houses, so we shouldn't throw stones. And I just think, say that as a general comment for us to be mindful of who we are and have respect for each other. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Bill Polisso, followed by Greg Gonzalez.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Tonight, I'd like to speak about the DePaul Center. A group of residents in District Five came together a few years ago when Mercy Housing tried to turn the DePaul Center property into a low-income housing project. Well, on Monday, we received the letter from the state of California deeming it eligible for the National Register Historic Places. I'd like to read now the letter from Julian Palanca from the State Historic Preservation Office. It was addressed to Ms. Weinzip, who was the historian who did the evaluation on the property. I'm writing to notify you that on September 10th, 2024, the above-named property was deemed eligible for the National Registry of Historic Places, National Register. As a result of being deemed eligible for the National Register, the property has been listed in the California Register of Historical Resource Percent Section 485 of the Public Resources Code. Eligibility for the National Registry provides a degree of protection from adverse effects resulting from federally-funded or licensed projects. There are no restrictions placed on the property owner regarding normal use, maintenance, or sale of the property deemed eligible for the National Registry. However, a project that may cause substantial adverse changes in the significance of the eligible property may require compliance with Local Ordinance of the State of California Environmental Quality Act. In addition, eligibility properties deemed damaged due to national resources may be subject to the provisions of Section 528 of the Public Resources Code in the state of California. I'd like to present that letter to you, mayor, and the city manager for its proper filing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Greg Gonzalez.
Good evening, thank you for the time. A happy but somber New Year to all. The acrid smell of smoke as we entered the chamber cannot be ignored. Santana winds have always existed, but the conditions that transform those winds into ember-carrying gusts... but the conditions that transform those winds into ember-carrying gusts have not. Climate change is real and it's only a matter of time until our city and our homes are under siege, not only from the freeways that surround us, but also from the perils of wildfires we witness now. I command and congratulate former Mayor Peralta and the City Council for securing a $770,000 grant from Cal Fire Urban Forestry. I call on the city to publish an act on a plan to execute and fulfill this grant. The recent LA Times article stating that the city's finances are once again under scrutiny is alarming. Let's do the right thing. Let's appear in the news for progress and innovation, not malfeasance and scandal. I also call upon the city to enact a mandatory tree ordinance, a ban on single-use plastic items in our restaurants and fast food locations, and environmental justice and sustainability lessons for all Montebello Unified students. There is much work to do. Let's remember this tragedy by doing all we can to prevent it from happening again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor, that does conclude all speaker cards for non-agenda items.
Thank you. Uh, this time we'll move on to staff communication of items of community interest, city manager.
Yes, mayor, council member. On behalf of the, um, of the city, we want to offer our prayers and condolences to all the families and persons that have been impacted by the recent fires. The last couple of days have been very tragic on, on many levels. Um, this has even impacted one of our family members in the city. One of our employees lost her home as part of the, as a result of these fires. Um, nevertheless, our, our city was proactive in terms of trying to address and prepare for these issues. Yesterday morning, we did activate our emergency operations center, which internally allows us to coordinate our internal resources, our departments at all levels from police department to public works to parks, like even our HR department, making sure that we handle any claims or any immediate concerns. Uh, were activated yesterday. Uh, thankfully, we, we haven't had major impacts in the city of Montebello beyond, uh, you know, things flying, trees that fell over and caused some power outages. Um, our impact has been minimal, but we've been very proactive in addressing immediately the concerns. Additionally, we've been, um, helpful in ensuring that we provide mutual aid to our neighboring communities. Um, and in that, in that respect, I want to allow our, our chief Pella to talk a little bit about specifically what our fire department, um, has been facilitating with our neighbors to, to help them in this tragic time.
Thank you, city manager and mayor, mayor pro tem, members of the city council. So yes, um, we have been very active, very busy, uh, and our prayers go out to, well, first for the first responders and everybody that's obviously experienced a loss. It's horrific. Uh, it's, it's horrible, but, um, as part of our mutual aid and part of the agreements that we have in place in the state, which are very robust, uh, we do have a strike team out there. And I'm gonna read a little bit from the strike team leader. He was able to, uh, emailed us some information. So Montebello Engine 55 responded with a strikes team leader, Montoya, RBC. Uh, he is leading the strike team with units from Downey, Santa Fe Springs, and Pasadena as part of the Area East Strike Team. To the Palisades Fire, since arriving at the incident, they have been assigned to Branch Five. Uh, they immediately went into, uh, providing structure protection, fire suppression uh, through the neighborhoods of, uh, Pacific Palisades. They are currently on the clock and not scheduled to be relieved until tomorrow morning around 700, putting them on the line for over 40 hours. They are in great spirits and will be heading home when the conditions improve. Um, so we don't know exactly when they're coming back, but, uh, they, they went straight to work, uh, my understanding, and they haven't stopped. So, uh, let's keep them in our prayers and, uh, obviously, they, they make Montebello proud when they're out there and, um, and that's my report, city manager.
Thank you, city manager, and thank you, fire chief. Um, and just on behalf of the council, again, just want to commend, um, all the work that our staff is doing, um, our, uh, public safety, um, law enforcement, our, our fire department. Um, they're literally in the front lines fighting this fire. Um, I think we all, uh, we all see how much of a scary situation it is. Um, and, um, our, our duty is, you know, to also see how we can support. And I want to also give thanks to a lot of the residents and a lot of the business community that has stepped up. Um, we, you know, today we received a pallet of water to, um, our fire department. And there's a lot of folks from our Tesla partners. And, but there's a lot of people in the business community that are just, um, giving us a call, asking myself, my colleagues, staff, on how they can help, how they can support. So it's, it's in, um, in tough times, you see how the, the community can come together. So, um, to our neighboring cities, we're here to offer a hand, uh, we're here to offer support and, um, we just hope that, you know, everything can, um, get cleared up pretty soon. And, um, and then comes the rebuilding portion of it too, right? Because, um, there's a lot of people that have lost their homes. Um, you know, I think we see pictures and, um, and people losing, you know, even animals and, you know, there's been casualties. And so we're really, um, we're really there to support our neighbors and, um, you know, we'll be doing everything we can to, to continue to keep our community safe and also provide all the support that we can. But thank you. Uh, we'll move on to, um, our public hearing. Do we have a presentation for this item?
Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Uh, we do have a presentation tonight. Um, per HUD requirements, item seven on tonight's agenda is a public hearing item related to the city's five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, the analysis of impediments, and the citizen participation plan. Um, I really would like to take this moment to acknowledge Rosemary Perish, who will be providing the presentation tonight along with the Celeste Jordi, who's in the audience, um, who both represent the city's housing division and have done an amazing job to get us to this point, and we look forward to moving these plans forward. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council, city attorney, city manager, employees, staff and community members. Um, it is an honor to be here before you presenting this consolidated plan process presentation. I have a slide deck for you. It's okay. While they get ready, um, we've been working very hard on, uh, making sure that we are meeting the regulations stipulated by HUD for this plan. It entails a lot, uh, but we can get it done. So, um, it's the time now that, um, we have to prepare this in order to submit it by May, which is our deadline of this year. Um, so this first slide uh, that you see here is gonna be just the agenda of the items that I'll be covering in this presentation. It's gonna be, uh, very brief. But these are some of the items that we're gonna discuss. I just listed them out there for you. Uh, we're gonna talk about how we're preparing the consolidated plan, which is the five-year plan, the annual action plan, the analysis of impediments, and the citizen participation plan. So, uh, staff prepares a five-year consolidated plan. Uh, this will include the years 2025 to 2029. And the consolidated plan serves as the official, uh, application for, um, our HUD, CDBG, and home programs. The CDBG, which means Community Development Block Grant Program, and our home program, which it stands for Home Investment Partnership Programs. And the consolidated plan provides a strategy for addressing critical housing and community development needs for our cities, our city and its residents. Uh, this process involves a lot of data analysis, uh, community engagement, and strategic planning. Uh, this next, uh, slide here details the preparation of the annual action plan, which is the one that we present yearly to our council for approval. And this year, it will be the 2025, 2026 Annual Action Plan. And it's, the annual action plan outlines, uh, how the funds will be used the first year out of the five-year plan that, that we will be establishing. Um, again, it's for the CDBG and home funds. And this plan also addresses different critical housing and community development needs that we will, uh, be funding for, for the year. Uh, the staff also prepares an analysis of impediment to fair housing. Uh, we use, we use, um, we use a, um, app and card for this. Um, and this is an analysis of impediment which outlines our fair housing concern uh, for within the city such as discrimination and lending practices or governmental barriers to housing. Um, so HUD suggests that uh, our city or every jurisdiction conducts an updated analysis every three to five years. Our city always updates it every five years with the consolidated plan. Uh, staff also prepares a citizen participation plan. And the goal of this plan is to, um, provide all citizens with an opportunity to participate in our planning process um, for implementation and assessments of our CDBG and home programs. The citizen participation is about thoughtfully engaging the people who will directly benefit from the funds um, and building community support for the projects. So these programs again, um, it's a CDBG program. Our city receives approximately $3 million every five years uh, for funding community development and economic development activities. And our city receives approximately 1 million, uh, home program funds every five years for, um, activities such as the ones you see listed here. Housing rehabilitation. For that program, we, we started a, a new grant program this year. Um, so that's been going very well. We've been receiving a lot of inquiries from our community. Uh, but that's just an example of the programs or the activities that we're able to fund. Um, the main categories of expenses for the city are usually, thank you, are usually, um, the following. Our funds are, are usually used for public service, housing improvements, public facilities, community development activities, public right-of-way such as street and ADA improvements, uh, fair housing, and planning and administration. So before you is a brief timeline of the process of our consolidated plan. Uh, we started this back last year in, in 2024. So October through December, uh, staff did due diligence and data gathering. Uh, we also did community engagement. And we also reviewed the applications for the CDBG grant inquiries for this upcoming fiscal year. Now what's left is, uh, what you see under 2025. So in January, which is now, we're having our first public hearing. Um, this is the public hearing where we allow our public to make comments. Um, and also we, we, we would like to receive direction from city council. Um, and then in February, uh, staff begins drafting the consolidated plan. We're already drafting the annual action plan, the analysis of impediment, um, and the citizen participation plan documents. Then in, in March, we finalize our draft documents, including the consolidated plan. Around March and April, we publish a 30-day public comment period. Um, we publish a notice that will allow that public comment period for 30 days. Then in April, we come back here and, uh, we do our public hearing number two, requesting, um, council's approval for the, uh, plans that we have established. Um, again, there's a 30-day comment period. So this plan will be able to be reviewed within that time. If there are any changes needed, any suggestions, we're able to take those in. And then by May, we would love to submit this plan, this plan and these documents to HUD for approval to meet compliance deadlines. Uh, in regards to the citizen participation, before the city can begin the project selection process, uh, for these programs, HUD requires a mandatory citizen participation process. So it's a big deal for us. And, um, in order to, this happens in order to adopt objectives and policies that reflect the current needs of the community. Um, residents and stakeholders are asked to participate and comment on issues and problems affecting low to moderate income persons so that the city makes informed funding decisions. And the way that we obtain participation is through stakeholder interviews, uh, citywide community surveys, community outreach meetings, and then to public meetings and hearings. So the next steps, um, it looks a little small, but the next steps here are the following. So today, city council is asked to conduct a public hearing to receive input from the public and provide direction to city staff on the five-year con plan, annual action plan, analysis of impediment, and citizen participation plan. Uh, number two, after receiving the input and direction from city council, the drafts of the plans will be finalized. Number three, the city will conduct a comment period after that, and then hold the public hearing to adopt the five-year consolidated plan, the yearly annual action plan, the analysis of impediment, the, um, to fair housing, and the citizen participation plan. And then finally, uh, following city council adoption, the five-year plan and all of the other documents will be submitted to HUD for approval. And this concludes the presentation. Um, this is staff's contact information. If there are any questions, if anyone would like to submit a comment from the public, um, we're open to receive that. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, at this time, um, I'd like to open up the public hearing with 7:48.
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards on this item, but at this time, anyone wishing to speak about this item may address the council by approaching the podium.
Good evening, Will Severa. I'm curious, uh, when they're gonna have the community meeting and the outreach, sometimes people cannot make it. Is there a way that we can do that in the, uh, council chambers? So this way you can stream it, also have audio and microphones because sometimes when they host meetings, you're not gonna be able to hear the people and you're not gonna be able to stream it if you can't make it. Plus, it'll be recorded so people can view it later. On one of the items, I noticed that they said it can be used funds for a right-of-way. My question would be is, is there any pre-approved or anticipated right-of-way projects in the city of Montebello, specifically Garfield and Viacompo? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there, uh, anybody else in the public that would like to speak on this item? Okay, so at this time, I'll close the public hearing at 7:49. Uh, and if we can also maybe, um, answer some of the questions.
Yeah, absolutely. Sure thing. So, yes, sir. Um, so your first question about the community meetings? Absolutely. We usually hold our community meetings, um, here in the chambers. We did one, actually. That was one of our first community meetings. Um, and yes, when we're here, we, we are able to use our microphones. Um, if we can stream them, it could be an option we can look into. Um, but yes, absolutely. We hold our, our community meetings here in the chamber. That's Um, but yes, absolutely. We hold our, our community meetings here in the chamber. That's one of the, that's one of the processes that we do. And then the second question, um, yes, we are able to use our funding uh, for right-of-way, public right-of-way activities. Uh, the consolidated plan, obviously, we're developing it right now, so if this is a concern, then this is something we can add as um, a possible funding activity, uh, for the future. And then, uh, we can, if there are funds available, we can, um, and if it meets our um, housing element and all of that, then we're able to use funds towards that.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, I just think it's important to note, Mr. Manager, as well, um, that funding is unknown at this point, so we, we get our allocations, obviously, from HUD, so we, we need to work within the parameters of those funding, um, opportunities, so we, once we, um, get those allocations, we can, uh, come back, obviously, to council to allocate that funding accordingly.
Thank you for that. And actually, my apologies. I know there was a resident that did want to speak on
Oh, sure.
on this, so if you can come up, please.
Hi, thank you so much. Is there a, a designated area already that's being looked at? Is it in the south side? Is it in the north side? Uh, for the, um, affordable housing, are they multi-units? Are they gonna be single housing units? Um, those are things that I would have concern about. We have a bad parking problem in Montebello. Um, people jump in their cars on street sweeping days and they wait till the, the street sweeper goes by so they could jump in and move it. Uh, so there is a parking problem, so, um, I believe all those uh, areas will be addressed in future meetings, I imagine. So, um, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'll look to, um, our director.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, that, that is correct. Um, you know, a pro- for example, a, a residential project, um, would go through, uh, the process as, as any other project would and would include, uh, community engagement, um, to address concerns. And, uh, that would be something that would be handled by our planning division.
Thank you for that. Um, at this time, I'll bring it up to my colleagues to see if they have any questions, comments. Councilmember Peralta.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, I really appreciate the work that's being done for this consolidated plan and um, really just emphasizing the importance of this, this three million dollars in funding that we can be very innovative in the ways that, uh, council can use that directly impacts and benefits our residents. I know that the timeline presented, um, for the first year is just a little, you know, it's pretty quick. Um, and I think my ideas might be better serving for year two or beyond. Um, but just to kind of discuss some of the priorities that I would like to see, and, and I think there's really that room under the community development activity portion, um, to really touch upon a previous public comment that, uh, was brought forth, uh, by Mr. Gonzalez earlier, that um, there's a really big need for the city to start taking, um, climate change seriously, and there are a lot of now, um, just innovative strategies, policies, and programs that uh, local cities are adopting when it comes to economic development, community development, and tying that into uh, climate change priorities. So for example, um, you know, there's a lot of organizations that are currently partnering with cities to be able to upscale their resi- their residents, um, in specific areas. So you have uh, um, what's it called? Um, LA Grid Alternatives. They're a specific nonprofit organization that basically has this training program where, um, they teach, uh, local residents and actually certify them in the solar industry and being able to, um, basically implement, you know, solar panels throughout, uh, the community. And so they train them, they, they train them, they certify them, and they also, uh, end up providing them jobs or connecting them to jobs within that industry. Um, there's also, uh, for example, Los Angeles Clean Tech Incubator. Uh, they're a specific, um, incubator, uh, organization that also has very innovative, uh, programs specifically in trying to, uh, develop, uh, local business entrepreneurs in the, in educating them on how to have greener practices within their industries. And so, uh, I think they have like a six-week free program for local entrepreneurs. And I think this ties back on how we can, um, you know, use this as a, as a starting point in Montebello to start thinking about how we can educate our businesses, how we can upscale our residents. Um, for example, Bimbo Bakery, uh, just this past year, um, brought the largest microgrid system, uh, in California to the city of Montebello, which not a lot of people know. Um, this will actually reduce their carbon emissions in, um, throughout, not only in Montebello, but in general, through, uh, the U.S. landscape that they're now implementing through this micro system in a very significant way. To have a company like Bimbo take on these greener initiatives and greener practices in our city is a model that I think should, something that we should take in terms of how we can maybe develop programs that we can help educate and bring forth opportunities for local businesses to understand how they can become, uh, greener. And so I'm not sure if these types of programs specifically can fall. I know there's a lot of, um, different requirements in terms of what can fall, uh, within community development programs. But I think that we can, hopefully, with this process and, and, um, as we have a few years in, in each, in each phase, um, to maybe get a little bit more creative in terms of that, uh, that type of funding. Um, there's Latina geeks who I know we've, we've had an opportunity, Mayor, to speak to, um, and they provide specific, uh, s- free programs, uh, for residents in coding and A I and technology. So teaching women, Latina women, how to enter that industry. Uh, so one of, uh, tying it back to also, lastly, uh, Mayor, uh, to my, um, one of my council orals is developing a economic, um, and workforce development ad hoc committee. And maybe this might be something, uh, uh, an activity that that committee can take on in terms of potentially advising and providing these suggestions for uh, future types of programs that can maybe be developed, uh, through this funding process. And it doesn't have to just be this funding process. I know there's a, there's a lot of money coming in, uh, in terms of community development, green initiatives. Um, but just wanted to provide my two cents in terms of my vision for, for these, uh, th- th- this type of funding and maybe uh, encourage us to be a little innovative, so. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Um, do any of my other colleagues have any questions, comments?
I, I just wanted to highlight, um, so in, in the numbers that we looked at, it looks like, um, for C D B G funding, it'll be about six hundred thousand, um, a year. And in home funds, about like two hundred thousand, breaking it down. So that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we're talking about, you know, almost a million dollars. But, um, I do wanna highlight that amount so that, uh, if we could leverage it like something like council member Scarlett, um, uh, council member Peralta stated, um, when we leverage these funds, you can make that, you know, into something bigger. So it's important to be part of that citizen participation part of it, that, you know, it's mandated, but really have input from the community, what you wanna see in your communities and how you wanna spend that money. So I wanna highlight that as well, the community participation part of it. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Peralta. Uh, council member Torres, do you have any comments, questions on this item? Okay.
Sure thing. Um, so the great part about the consolidated plan is that, um, it goes based off of the voice of the community and the stakeholders. So, um, as you'll, as you noted in the staff report, you know, it, it mentioned, uh, the last five-year goals um, and the needs that were addressed. And these proposed, um, new goals are based on those seventy-two responses plus the stakeholder, um, responses that we received. So the trend is is fairly, uh, balanced out as, as, as the last five years where, uh, funds, people want, the community to want the funds to go towards public service, towards, um, housing improvements, towards the right-of-ways. Uh, so i- it's, it's about the same trend, uh, from the last five, five years ago, if that answers your question. Sure, so I believe the challenge that, uh, we, we saw the last five years is that we had funds available, uh, we had, we had activities that we wanted to use the funds for. Um, and then when the funds became available, we just didn't have, um, anyone really taking advantage of, of the programs that we had available. So then we had to get creative and re-shift and, and think of other innovative ways to spend the funds or, you know, places that we could use the funds. Um, and so, you know, staff will always listen to the community, listen to the stakeholders regarding our consolidated plan. We will do our best to implement the desires of our community and stakeholders. And then if we face challenges, staff will always do their best to figure out w- how to overcome those challenges. And we will always try to find a place to put the money in, in the right activities, whatever may be needed. Um, so that, that, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, council member Torres. Um, again, thank you for the presentation. I echo what all of my colleagues are saying and, uh, uh, really value the community participation. Um, and, uh, looking forward to this, extremely important for us, so. Um, again, I know you've put a lot of hard work into this, getting the council's input, uh, community's input, and, uh, you know, um, putting all that together and, and, and putting this, um, all of these, uh, all of this funding together. So again, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the hard work. At this time, um, I will entertain a motion to approve this item.
All right, we'll go ahead and, uh, motion.
Okay, we have first by Councilmember Peralta.
I second.
Okay, we have a, a second by Mayor Protem. If I can please get a roll call.
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres. Councilmember Peralta.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
And I vote aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to regular business, item number eight. Consideration of filling vacant councilor position. Um, are there any speakers for this item?
Yes, Mayor, we do have a couple of speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
First speaker is Will Severo, followed by Jesse Garcia.
Good evening, Will Severo, resident of District Three. Thank you for allowing me to talk, council, and, uh, Happy New Year. Rumors and discussions about appointing continue to be taking place outside of the city council chambers appoint, to appoint resident Rick Alonso for the vacancy. You are on notice because if you are, and I'm gonna emphasize if, because I'm not saying you are, but if you are illegally discussing your plan to appoint Rick Alonso and residents are aware of those discussions, these rumored discussions are a violation of the open meeting laws of the state of California by you people engaging in illegal serial meetings to discuss amongst yourselves the issues like appointing Rick Alonso. You are violating the Brown Act of the state law that provides a misdemeanor for penalties for certain violations. Anytime you people discuss a matter that leads to an action or, and the term "action" taken means leading to a vote by the majority of the members of this body, and it could trim, trigger a criminal penalty. If Rick is appointed, then shame on all of you. The public has a right to know what you are doing. And this rumor of your scheming, if it is true, it is an illegal action. I would like to let the residents know and out, that if you see the council discussing this outside of the chamber for three or more members, that they cannot discuss a meeting that leads to an action or a vote. So once again, three members cannot talk outside of these chambers that would consist of a vote. So they, so if you guys see that, then you can, um, con- report it to the district attorney so they can investigate and prosecute. So this pattern of misconduct must stop. Outside of these chambers, the council may not discuss a matter amongst themselves that will be voting or taking an action on, period. I encourage members of the public to report it to the public, to the district attorney if you have any evidence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Jesse Garcia, followed by Felipe Carrillo.
Good evening, Mayor Melendez and Mayor Protem Tamayo, esteemed council members and executive staff. I am glad to hear that you're finally gonna fill in that vacancy for District Five. Um, I guess the million-dollar question is, special election, spend more money or appoint? Uh, personally, I'd like to see someone appointed. Um, I've heard there's several people out there. Uh, but the, uh, only person that comes to my mind is an individual who's, uh, done a lot for the community so far. He's, uh, spoken up. He's, uh, led several of the community, along with other community members, actually pulled off a Hail Mary play with getting the DePaul Center, uh, put on the historical list. I mean, I, I would like a person like that to represent District Five. Uh, speaks his mind, um, but is fair. Um, I think you need someone like that on council. Again, I'm not sure who you have in mind, who, if there's an application process, I'm, I'm not, you know, too savvy on how that works. But in my opinion, for me, the person that I would want to represent me in District Five is Bill Pelosi. I mean, you already heard him. He comes up to the podium several times a year, uh, discussing items that are kinda not fair or that leave District Five out. There's, there's several items that we are lacking representation in District Five. And for a special election, I, I think the way it might work, it wouldn't be until sometime in March. If that's when it would happen, usually it's either March or June, July, or, or November of If that's when it would happen, usually it's either March or June, July or November of this year. But I can't wait anymore, there's too many things happening in District Five. We really would like to get somebody up there. And if you're going to go the route of appointing someone and he does throw his hat, I mean, his name in the hat, please consider appointing him. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker is Felipe Carrillo.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff, and happy new year. My name is Felipe Carrillo, eight hundred August Street. Okay, the reason I'm here is because I would like, I heard a couple people, a few people before me, about election, the way to election, the council member in District Five, which is I live. I believe that we deserve, we the residents in Montebello and District Five, by the way, we are all Montebello residents, but I believe, and a lot of my neighbors, they believe we need to have a special election to decide who we want to be represented in this council member. But I would like urge, don't forget us, because our district is really bad. So I really, I really urge all the council members, mayor, to have the opportunity, the ones we live in the District Five, to have the choice to elect our council member. Thank you very much and happy new year.
Thank you for your comment.
Next speaker, I do apologize if I pronounce this wrong, Kaya Yerbaum.
My name is Kaya. And I'm a member of the Fifth District. And I don't think it's fair that you guys got rid of our representative just to appoint our representative, it should be an election. And the choices are between Bill, who should be disqualified automatically for initiating the signatures and never needed to get the petition, and the vote recall on the ballot. And the other option is Rick Alonso. I don't know who that guy is, but from what I heard, he's going to be ran by a certain somebody who calls herself a consultant or a campaign manager, but she's really just like a lobbyist or like a pimp. And gets votes for certain people for, we don't know how that goes. And that's just not, that's not cool either. So we should be able to elect who we want and not be... What happened to Angie wasn't fair, period. Anyway. And then, so, and then I have a question about number nine. It can't be answered now, but how is that possible that it's just like dissolved? What did it say?
So we can't, we're speaking on item number eight, but you're more than welcome to submit a comment for number nine.
Okay, I'll pick up number nine next time and then, oh, I'll write about it on Facebook. Anyway, so yeah, so what's it going to say? Yeah. I think we should just do the election. Because giving a pack two, like five grand for two million dollars isn't that cool. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment.
Mayor, that does conclude all speaker cards for agenda item number eight.
Okay, thank you all for your comments. At this time, I'll turn it over to our city manager, who will be providing a report for this item.
Yes, Mayor, council members, happy to speak about this item. This item is consideration of filling a vacant council member position. This is the result of the 2024 general municipal election that was held on Tuesday, November fifth, 2024. This resulted in the recall of council member Angie Jimenez by the residents of District Five. Subsequently, the city council was required to certify the election results of this election. This happened on December fifth. As a result, the county requires the city to take action on the vacant position with the option of filling the position or having an election. This decision must be made within 60 days. In this instance, it's, the deadline is February fifth, 2024. Once again, this is, this item is to consider the, this was a result of the recall for council member Jimenez. And the council is considering filling her unexpired term that ends in December 2026. Staff is coming to the council seeking direction on one or two options. Option number one is to fill the vacancy by a special election. Per government code, section 36512 subsection B subsection one states if the council calls for a special election, the special election shall be held on the next regularly established elected date, no, not less than 114 days from the call of the special election. A person elected to fill the vacancy holds the office for the unexpired term of the former incumbent. It is important to note that LA County does not have any upcoming elections in 2025. Therefore, this would be a special election and not consolidated with any federal, state, or county contest. As a result, the city of Montebello would fully be responsible for all costs incurred. The estimated cost from the registered recorder for a special election would be $224,100,100. By comparison, the last cost we got for the 2022 general election citywide was $196,044. The other option for council is to fill the vacancy by appointment until the next regularly scheduled general election to be held on November third, 2026. The city of Montebello Municipal Code does not include an appointment process for filling vacancies of elected officials. The city council can solicit applications and conduct interviews prior to the appointment. The city council may choose, but is not required to solicit and/or conduct interviews prior to making the appointment. For consideration, our staff did prepare a draft application which is included in this staff report as attachment B for your consideration, once again. If the city council wishes to fill the vacancy by appointment, the appointment can be made at any time within the 60-day period of the vacancy. Since the vacancy was effective December fifth, 2024, and if the city council opts to fill the vacancy by appointment, it is recommended that the city council hold a special session on the next regular meeting of January 22nd, 2025, or at a time that is convenient to consider applications and make an appointment. It is recommended by our staff and our city that any person appointed to fill the vacancy be a citizen of the United States, a resident of District Five, and a registered voter of the city of Montebello at the time that the application is completed and at least 18 years of age at the time of the appointment. Per Montebello Municipal Code, any person is disqualified from holding office upon conviction of a felony of any felony. There's also an attached resolution that is prepared by our city attorney's office with the various options based on the direction that council, we would take appropriate action, including notifying the county if the council chooses to do a special election or an appointment. If the council chooses to do an appointment, we will immediately notice that that process as attachment B references. We did outline a process by council. These are suggested process for you to consider. We welcome your advice and then we're open to any questions at this time.
Thank you, city manager. I'm going to go down the line for my colleagues to ask any questions, comments. I know we have staff here ready to answer any questions, concerns. Mayor, okay, Mayor Protem Tamayo?
No questions.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Torres? I think we can put in both questions, comments that you might have on the item.
And so I personally am in favor of what has been developed. It's been properly vetted and it falls within the required timeline that we already have per the code. And so with that, I would like to just move forward with motioning for an appointment with the application process as outlined.
Thank you, council member. Okay, go ahead. Thank you, council member. If I may, just provide some comments here. I think we heard it here, you know, there's a divided room with even the residents as well on where to go, whether the appointment or a special election. I do know that it's a high cost for a special election and I think many residents will agree on that. I know we're not about reshifting or reallocating some of that funding, but with $200,000, you know, some of that funding can go to the district or we can take a little portion and do something specific to District Five, right? What I do want to state is that I want to make sure that moving forward with the appointment process that we do market this, that we do advertise this, that we do provide opportunity for folks to apply. I hope that we get a list of well-qualified candidates. It's also, I think, all of our commitment here up on the dais and my colleague over the phone, that we're willing to take calls as of now and we have been for that district. That district needs a representative, right? But we are also willing to go in there, meet with your, meet with all of you, any concerns, issues, and we have been doing it already, right? And I spoke with some of the residents that are here and we want to do, you know, some town hall, bring in some of our directors, some of our police department, fire department, and make sure that we're hearing and addressing the issues that are going on in that district. With that being said, I'm hearing also my colleagues with some of the concerns and issues. And I kind of want to find some type of middle ground on this. And I think we do have a January 15th deadline. I think if maybe we can extend it to January 17th or 20th, which is still before the next meeting. I think that can provide opportunity to give a couple more days for folks to apply. But I do want us as a city to really promote this application process as much as we can. And I think all of my colleagues would agree to it, to really make sure that... everybody in the district knows that there is an appointment process that is going on. So if, I know there's a motion on the table. I'd like to see if the original maker of the motion, if she, if my colleague, would maybe consider extending the application deadline to January 17 or the 20, which is still falls under the deadline for the next council meeting. And also, you know, we are mindful of the deadline that is occurring. And I just want to pose it for educational purposes. What would happen if February 5 passes and we don't reach some type of consensus or?
Yeah, yeah, the February 5 is a hard deadline. Should the council fail to take action on this vacancy, it automatically defaults to the county and the county would institute a special election. And if it does help in terms of context, I mean, with concurrence with the city attorney in terms of, I would advise that we try to make a decision by the next properly agendized meeting. We don't want to run into an issue where we, for some reason, we don't meet this deadline. I think we are able to still bring it back to the next meeting, city attorney, and as long as we notice in terms of the applicants just before that actual meeting starts. And that same information that would be disseminated to council in terms of who submitted applications will also will be released to the public accordingly. So you know also the candidates as well.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, as the city manager indicated, the February 5 deadline is a hard deadline. It's not one that the council can adjust. It's established and set by state law. In terms of the deadline for the application, that's within the council discretion. I should note, if I'm looking correct, the 20th is Martin Luther King Day. I don't know if City Hall is open that day. We are? Okay, so then either the 17th or the 20th, you know, if the council wants to go in that direction.
Mayor, I have a quick question. In terms of just, obviously, the development of the agenda and noticing, how does that then work?
If you do extend the deadline, so typically internally for us, the reason we asked for the deadline on the 15th, because we needed time to actually receive the applications and agendize them for the next day when we, you know, we finalize the application. So with the understanding, if you were to extend the deadline, it wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to see who applied for the application in the normal posting. You'll probably see it actually the day of the actual council meeting. And as you're mentioning, the day closing, one of the, one of the things that is the holiday, one of the things that is noted in the application, we want to be accessible. We did leave the option not only to email, but you can actually walk in the application. So you would not have the option of doing the December, the January 20th. You would, it would actually be the 21st or the 17th to submit the application. The 20th wouldn't be an option since technically we're not open that day.
And further, the 17th is a Friday, so the city is closed.
Which is closed as well.
So I think we should stick to the one week. So we could hit our dates.
One of the things that as a city, we try to be as transparent and accessible. We do feel the application is, we are making it as accessible as possible. It's not robust. We are asking for basic information in terms of ensuring that the residents, that, you know, they're registered to vote, that they don't have felonies, the subject, that even, you know, they're welcome to submit a statement. I mean, the only hard requirement, I guess, would be for them to attend the next council meeting of January 22nd to provide a statement if they wish to do so. And also to afford the ability for the city council to ask questions if they want to do that. But that's a regular, next regular scheduled meeting. We are trying to lessen the impact again, making ourselves accessible within the time that we're open, email, in person. Again, I would make the case, I don't, I don't believe that we're adding any onerous requirements in this application for folks not to be able to submit an application by the deadline of next Wednesday.
Mayor, if I may. We're obviously dealing with many, I think, issues in terms of timeline, in terms of transparency. As I said earlier, I'm not willing to jeopardize the timeline and basically take this decision off of the power that we have over the process. And also, I want to prioritize transparency in that I believe the applications, although we have the option of having the application, extending that timeline for the application and not publishing it and just basically having it the day of the meeting, I don't think that's appropriate. I personally think that those applications should be made available, that residents should be able to read through the specific questions that are being asked and also allowing us the time to be able to understand the candidates, their background. It doesn't allow us that turnaround time to be able to then process this information, obviously continue with the process in a way that keeps us in line with that very looming deadline. And so based on, I would say, the concerns and the process and the days that we have left, especially with holidays and obviously City Hall being closed on Friday, I want to continue with my motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Yes, go ahead.
Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I will just quickly just comment that, again, jeopardizing this timeline is something that I'm not willing to do. The last experience, we had issues of quorum and things were not able to move forward. And I am just not willing to take those chances. I think that we need to be very conservative and very, we are doing our best in being transparent and falling within the timelines that were set forth. I think if we put ourselves in a situation where we potentially could not abide by that February 5 timeline, it will do our city a big disservice. So with that, I again continue to call for a motion and request that I can request a second.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll entertain that motion right now, just one last comment. City Manager, if we could just please get this information out there as soon as possible, if possible tomorrow, and use all avenues when it comes to social media.
We already posted it. No, we need formal action. We can assure you it will be posted first thing tomorrow morning and we will disseminate it as much as possible.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion on the table?
I second.
Can we have a second, if I can please get a roll call?
Mayor Protem Tamayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Torres. Councilmember Peralta.
Aye.
Mayor Melendez.
I would aye. Okay, that item passes and we'll move on to item number nine. We don't have a presentation for this item.
If you want, Mr. Mayor, I can make a brief presentation. It is, what's before you this evening is the follow-up to action that was considered by the city council previously on October, October 23rd. The city council reviewed a evaluation of a previously provided report. We mentioned that as the Dominion Report. I don't know if you want to take public comment first?
Yes, I believe we have a speaker for this item.
Yes, Mayor, we do only have one speaker for this item, and it's going to be Delia Delgado.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff. Thanks again for this opportunity to speak. Adopting Resolution 25-04 and rescinding Reso 22-73 is a step in the right direction. I hope that the next step is a continued or is a continuing of investigation of those responsible for this character assassination and deliberate wrongdoing. I'm speaking primarily of the previous city manager and his cohorts. They must be held accountable for this conduct. These actions should not go unpunished. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments. We don't have any additional speakers. At this point, I'll bring it up to my colleagues to see if they have any questions, comments. Councilmember Torres, do you have any questions or comments? Thank you, Councilmember. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve. I second.
We have a first by Councilmember Peralta and a second by Mayor Protem Tamayo. If I can please have a roll call.
And that's both the resolution and the policy.
Okay.
I motion to approve, yes, both items.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you, Council, City Manager.
Yeah, I mean, my only, I'm reflecting on how the item was recommended at the last meeting. I think the intention at the time, given that it's very unique in terms of having investigations of an elected official in this capacity, which is very different than a personal matter for an employee, which is pretty well-established with internal controls. If I remember correctly, at least the intention of the body as a whole was to define a process based on best practices. And if I remember correctly, we're also working off a presentation that was previously done by a third-party agency that works in this capacity. So if I remember correctly, that was kind of like the onus of working towards this document. My concern would be this addition would kind of changes the direction or just my understanding or reflection of how that went. It would also, I think to a certain extent, create a process that's, that may be outside of our normal capacity as staff to define, specifically investigating council members, which is something that, you know, very hesitant that we should be involved with. Again, the document that's here is presented based on what are established best practices from outside agencies that work in this capacity with their recommendations. This is not something that our staff has defined, and I would be hesitant for us to get involved in defining that, how do we investigate our, how we investigate our council members.
Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, so I believe we have a first from Councilmember Peralta, and then we have a second from the Mayor Protem. If I can please get a roll call.
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. If we can please poll the council to see if there's any items that they would like to pull.
Yes, I'll poll the council. By the way, do we have any speaker cards for any consent agenda items?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, it would be appropriate for the city council to consider approving the consent agenda. All items are considered to be routine. These would include tonight, items number ten through, let's see, ten through eighteen, I'm sorry, sixteen, sixteen. And with that, I'll go through the list, and I'll ask first Mayor Protem Tamayo, do you have any items to poll?
No items to poll.
Thank you. Councilmember Torres? Thank you. Councilmember Peralta?
None.
And Mayor Melendez?
And I have no items.
Okay, with that, then it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve items ten through sixteen.
I motion to approve. Aye, second.
Okay, we have a first by Councilmember Peralta and a second by Mayor Protem Tamayo. Can I please get a roll call?
Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, all items are approved. We'll move to the next portion of the agenda, which is the AB one, two, three, four travel reports. Do any of my colleagues have anything to report?
I do. So this past week, I had an opportunity to attend Sacramento through, I mean, attend Contract Cities at Sacramento. I had the opportunity to attend with our mayor, as well as our city manager. It was a really great opportunity to come together and use that space to be able to really lobby our representatives and speak on the issues that are affecting the city of Monobello. The conference as a whole, they always do an incredible job in terms of prioritizing local control and speaking about issues that affect our communities, such as housing, which is something that we're all navigating through. I would like to also highlight the fact that this council is really taking priority in terms of being more proactive in being able to work towards our current situation with the state audit that was brought forth back in 2018, something that none of us on council were really on, once this was brought forth and we've all been dealing with. We had, I would say, very, very productive conversations with our state auditors, as well as the chair of the J-LAC committee, and we received really great feedback in terms of an action plan that we will be working towards, that they would be then reviewing in the next six months. And I'm just really appreciative of that opportunity to be able to go up there in a very productive way and collaborative way with my colleague, the mayor, and being able to make sure that, you know, we're representing the city and that we're being proactive in terms of working with the auditors and really working towards getting our city off that list. But beyond that, it was a great, it was a great conference, and it was just unfortunate to kind of be dealing with the circumstances now back home and trying to make it home, which was something we were not sure if we were able to do, but we're here. So that concludes my overview of my travel report. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I also have the report to provide. I did attend the Contract Cities Conference as well, in Sacramento. As far as the conference itself, I was able to actually be a part of a, I moderated a panel for, an affordable housing panel, and we were able to meet with a lot of the freshman state legislators, which is extremely important when we're seeking to find funding opportunities to bring back to our city. So it was extremely productive. We met with a lot of the new folks up there. We also had meetings with our state representatives as well. And, I don't know, I mean, we met with the state auditor. What I can share is, you know, I think things are looking good. There's a lot, there's a lot of, it was a lot of positive conversations that we had with the state auditor, and we really, really had a good conversation. So, again, we're really looking, working forward to hopefully, you know, be able to remove that of the high-risk list, but we're definitely making a lot of progress there. I'll move forward to council orals. I see, I'll turn over to Councilor Peralta.
Yeah, Mayor, I'll go ahead and just move forward with my first council orals, my first one, and I will go ahead and just request that my councilor number two and three be added to the next council meeting. I know we're all facing just very dire situations in terms of family and friends being impacted, and I don't want to take too much of our time this evening. I did want to just prioritize the request for consensus of, to establish an economic and workforce development ad hoc committee. I know we will be bringing forth the reappointments to existing ad hocs, but I did want to go ahead and get this going so that when that list does come forth formally in one of the next council meetings, at least this ad hoc, can be placed on there. Ultimately, speaking about the opportunities that are to come for the city of Monobello, we've been really putting a focus on economic and community development, as well as workforce development. We have the twenty-eight Los Angeles Olympics, as well as other major games that are coming to the city of Monobello. We just adopted our Economic Prosperity Plan, and I think there's a lot of opportunities for us on a council level to be engaged in terms of the activities, programs, and policies that we are seeking to establish. We have an opportunity to really strategically position our city to benefit from the influx of tourism, infrastructure investments, and job creation that are tied to the incoming various games that are coming forth to the county, making sure that we are taking advantage of job creation and workforce development opportunities. We have infrastructure in the city, there's going to be a lot of funding towards infrastructure. We have an Olympic-sized pool right there in the city of Monobello that not many cities have. How can we take advantage of this? How can we ensure that we're receiving funding to create more jobs, support local businesses, ensure that our businesses that are currently here can also positively benefit from these once-in-a-lifetime, or, yeah, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities? So with that, I would like to just request consensus from my colleagues to put forth a ad hoc for economic and workforce development.
Okay, I'll go around. We can have some roll call. Turn over the title?
Yes, Mayor Protem Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres? Councilmember Peralta?
Aye.
Mayor Melendez?
And I vote aye. Okay, does that conclude your?
Oh, apologies. Yeah, and if the staff can kindly please just add the remainder of those last two to the next council meeting, I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Before we adjourn the meeting, I would like to adjourn the meeting on behalf of Senator Archuleta's grandchild that was unfortunately killed in a head-on collision by a drunk driver in Apple Valley on December twenty-third. Alex Robles was thirty years old and a graduate from CSU SB, and had recently earned a master's degree in social sciences. And Alex was a great person, wonderful person, who was ready to take on a career that was always a dream of him at a young age and definitely touched many lives. So on behalf of myself, my colleagues, staff, we want to adjourn this meeting for Alex, who tragically passed away late last year. So if I can please have a moment of silence. Okay. Again, thank you all for everybody who joined us here, and please just stay safe and make sure that with all these fires are happening, to just take care of one another. Thank you.